We will go ahead and call tonight's meeting to order. If available, please stand with the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Pape.
Here.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Here.
Councilmember Hans.
Here.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Here.
Councilmember Leahy.
Here.
Councilmember Neal.
I would, just for the record, Madam Clerk, he is in Washington DC on city business with the NLC and was unable to get back this evening.
Okay. Councilmember Ryder.
Here.
Councilmember Silvers.
Here.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, the next item is public items. Members of the public are encouraged to use this time to make comments about matters that do not appear on the agenda. Comments about items on the regular agenda will be taken up as each item is considered. Please note that individuals making public comments will be limited to five minutes. And I do have two individuals that have signed up here currently, and we will take those in the order that they've signed up. The first one is Rick Williams. Mr. Williams, if you could come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Uh, Rick Williams?
What, I'm not sure that, hang on a second, sir. Let me, I think that needs to be turned on.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
I guess that makes a difference. Rick Williams, 9214 West 58th Terrace on present downtown Marion partnership. I wanted to ask, as simply as possible, since I won't be able to attend the subsequent executive committee meeting and have no voice in that, I would like to ask that you kindly approach any real property issues, and I know there are going to be some because you've got to deal with the flood abatement programs and whatever else you're planning on doing to us down here. Please keep an open mind and a straightforward approach and deal honestly and straightforwardly with businesses and get out there and actually go down and talk to people about how they're going to be affected and work out something rather than over and running over people. I think it will go a long way towards making things work more smoothly. Conversations are much better than dictations. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, sir. Okay, the next individual will be Billy Crone. Sir, come forward and give your name and address for the record.
Billy Crone, 6633. I actually signed up to speak about something on the agenda, so I imagine I'll talk later about that.
Yeah, let, when it were you, yeah, talk about what isn't on the agenda and then we'll, we'll call you back up with.
The only other thing I'd have to add is that I know that you are permitted by law to hold executive session in private to discuss the entirety of this issue about real estate purchase tonight. I would encourage you to opt into being more open with the public and perhaps discuss some summary of what happened after the meeting. The law doesn't prohibit you from doing that. It simply allows you to keep that secret if you choose, and I would hope that you choose not to keep as many secrets. Thank you.
And if you just raise your hand later when we get to the agenda item that you're interested in speaking on. Okay, I, that's the only individuals that I currently have signed up. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on the, in reference to public comments? I see no one else raising a hand, so we'll close out public comments. Next item is the consent agenda. All items listed under the heading are considered to be routine by the city council, may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which case that item will be removed, consent agenda considered separately. Considering I only have one item, and that's the minutes, is there anybody that would like to discuss the minutes or have a concern about the minutes before I entertain a motion? Okay, I see nobody. I'll entertain a motion for, okay, go ahead and.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve consent agenda item one.
Okay, we have a motion, and Mr. Silvers.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hans.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item on the agenda is the mayor's report. I have several things on the agenda this evening from the mayor, and the two of them are proclamations, so I always enjoy doing those. The first proclamation is, whereas the monarch butterfly is an iconic North American species with multi-generational migration and metamorphosis from caterpillar to butterfly and has captured the imagination of millions of Americans, and whereas we, the undersigned mayors and heads of local or tribal government, are deeply concerned about the decline of the monarch butterfly population, both the western and eastern monarch populations have experienced significant declines. Less than 1% of the western monarch population remains, while the eastern population has fallen by as much as 90%. Monarch scientists attribute the population decline to degradation in the loss of summer breeding habitat in the US and the loss of winter habitat in south central Mexico and the coast of California. And whereas cities, towns, and counties and communities have a critical role to play to help save the monarch butterfly, municipalities can provide habitat at public parks, median strips, community gardens, schools, and municipal buildings like recreation centers and libraries. Events such as community workshops, native plant giveaways, and monarch festivals can educate residents about the cultural significance of monarchs and how to create habitat. Simple changes in landscaping ordinances or other policies can make a big difference for the monarch too. And whereas we recognize the importance of creating monarch and pollinator habitat at parks, gardens, and other green spaces that every member of our community can equally enjoy, our work to help save the monarch butterfly intentionally engages all parts of our communities, ensuring that historically marginalized communities are not left out of the work or the many benefits of this work will create, and whereas the mayor speak up and take a stand, our communities notice. Now therefore, I, Bob Pape, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of Marion, do hereby commit to help restore the habitat for the monarch and encourage our residents to do the same, so that these magnificent butterflies will once again flourish across our continent. Proclaim this 27th day of March 2023, Bob Pape, Mayor. That's, and we've, we've got a pollinators and several things our public work is doing out there, and we appreciate that, that Mr. Fine. So, the second one is another proclamation. And this is, whereas Seven Days Make a Ripple changed the world as an annual series of events demonstrating how hatred, bigotry, and ignorance can be overcome by the kindness, respect, and understanding. And whereas Seven Days commemorates the lives of Dr. William Corperon, his grandson Reeve Underwood, and Teresa Lamano, who were murdered on April 13th, 2014 by encouraging all people to discover commonalities and overcome evil acts with kindness. And whereas Seven Days 2023 is April 5th through April 16th, and includes a focus on kindness through activities with the daily themes of love, discover, you, others, connect, go, and onward. And whereas Marion is committed to be a community where kindness is key and understanding is paramount, and stands in strong partnership to support these worthy outreach effort by conducting seven days of kindness activities. Now therefore, I, Bob Pape, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of Marion, Kansas, do hereby proclaim April 5th through April 16th, 2023 as Seven Days of Kindness in the city of Marion, and encourage all residents, including residents, businesses, organizations, and visitors, to come together during the seven days to act more kindly and be more understanding of differences, thereby making the world a better place one ripple at a time. Proclaim this 27th day of March 2023, Bob Pape, Mayor. And we also have an individual, Mr. Mayes, if you could come forward, and he's representing Seven Days, and I'll present that to you, but I understand you'd like to say a few words at this time.
Well, thank you, Mayor. First of all, I would like to just say thank you to the council for continuing to be a Seven Days of Kindness city again this year, and want to make sure to let you know that on April 5th is our annual breakfast and on April 16th, our annual walk, both out at the Church of the Resurrection. Want to invite you to that. You are a partner with us in our effort of seven days to overcome hate with education and dialogue. And what kind of hate am I talking about? Well, of course, the kind of hate that resulted in the death of Mindy Corperon's father and son. The kind of hate that resulted in the murder of my own nephew on 9/11 as a passenger on the first plane to hit the World Trade Center. The kind of hate that we see in anti-Semitic and homophobic and other kinds of hate speech and hate talk around not just the country, but also our own area. It's appropriate that I be here tonight because the lead editorial in the Star today, some of you may recognize the print edition of the Star, which was the only edition that was there when I began to work at the Star years ago. I just want to quote three sentences from, from this editorial. It says that Missouri reported more hate crimes in 2021 than it has ever had before. 194 versus the previous record in 93 of 167. Kansas City had 39 reported hate crimes in 2021. And the editorial concludes this way, "The FBI report should be a loud, clanging alarm. We have a citywide emergency to address. Seven Days is working hard with other agencies to address that, and we are really grateful for your help with this." And want to thank you again for the resolution and for your continued support of the work that we do, especially with our teenagers. And Mayor Pape, excuse me, Mayor Pape was, a week and a half or two ago, was at an event where those young people were awarded for their, for their winning prizes for our annual button contest and for our projects contest, and we were glad to have you there that day. So, thank you.
And I'd like to come down and present this to you, and maybe we can get a photo out. Go ahead.
And if I could, we do have buttons in the lobby in a basket. If anybody would like to take a button, there's different varieties, so help yourself.
Thank you.
Thank you for, for their organization.
Thank you.
And if you go to our city's website, we do have seven days of events that are occurring of, of love and kindness, so feel free to join in in those events as they occur. Okay, several other things before we get to our annual reports, that, just a couple things that I like to always report on, things that I've done or the council's done, and if I miss somebody that attended something, please chime in. But I met with the Oldham Park Fire Department Media Manager, Jason Rhodes, and got to say a few nice things about Chief Deener, who we've talked about is going to be retiring. This, he, later today, he will be giving us our fire department's annual report. But Chief Deener's upcoming retirement ceremony is March 31st at the Oldham Park Convention Center. It starts at 2:00 PM and ends at 5:00 PM, and so we'll look forward to hearing your last report and hopefully seeing you off there at that event as well, so. I and Chris Hans attended a Flags for Freedom meeting at our community center. We're both on that, serve on that committee. And Chris Hans and I, along with retired council member Scott Debold, who's in the audience this evening, if he has something too, but, and Nancy Hupp gathered our public work facility and bundled rebar in preparation for our Flags for Freedom event that's coming up this July. Chris Hans and I met at the city administrator's angle to prepare tonight's council agenda, and I got to attend the coffee with the cop, and I was only there for a short period of time, so I don't know if any of the council members were over there recently. And you always look forward to meeting with our police officers, and the fact that we get free coffee and donuts is also, you know, a bonus, so we always appreciate them and meeting with those individuals in the community policing program that they, they put on it all the time. It is with regret that I have to announce that Carl Wilks, one of our former mayors, was a public servant for 40 years and has passed away. And I'd just like to read a little bit about some of the things that Mayor Wilks was accomplished during, during his lifetime. Carl Wilks was a public servant for over 40 years, and he was elected as the first African-American mayor in Johnson County in 2001, winning the election by two votes, so every vote counts. He served two terms at Marion's mayor from 2001 to 2009. Carl was a 59-year resident of Marion. His full-time job before retiring was a field supervisor for the Johnson County Housing Services. Prior to working for Johnson County, he developed and secured funding for the Kansas City-Kansas Section B, or Section 8, excuse me, housing program, and served as director. He was named an African-American Trailblazer by the House Representative Dennis Moore in 2006 for his many contributions to the community. Mayor Wilks did a lot for, for our community, and he was sorely be missed, and, you know, our worst condolences out to his family. Okay, so, we also have another announcement. I guess it's kind of with regret that I have to announce this too, but it's a, it's a joyous event as well too, but Captain Troy Duvernell is with us this evening with our police department, and he is, he is actually retiring after 28 years. And his retirement party will be 3:00 to 4:30 PM coming up on, which I forgot to write down, what day is it? Wednesday. Wednesday is, is that event that will be held up in our community training room here at the city hall, so if anybody's available to attend, we sure want to come and see him off. I, I also know we have a, we have a certificate for you that will be presented. I thought we might be doing that this evening, but do, I'll reach out to our media. Do we want a picture of him this evening? Is, okay, let's, let, let me come down and at least shake your hand.
Okay.
Officially be Captain Duvernell's last meeting, and we will congratulate you.
Don't like to hold hands with the man this long. Just this man. Thank you.
Sure, Wednesday, I may have stories to tell about Captain Duvernell.
We're going to have a, with Deener and I, we'll have a guns poses retirement.
That'll be awesome. I'll look forward to seeing that.
You can play all week.
Oh, yeah, great. We always, we always enjoy that. Okay. All right, well, I think officially, I think the next item up will be our Parks and Rec Director, Slogan is going to give the annual report.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. This is actually the first annual report that we have presented as the Parks and Recreation Department. Through my tenure, this information has regularly been shared at the Park and Recreation Advisory Board Committee, but after the successful one-quarter set sales tax that passed and gave us the beautiful community center, we felt it was opportune time to bring this to you annually. So, when that passed, our goal was that the subsidy of recreation remain consistent to what it had been back in 2018. So we want to show you the measures that we're taking and the growth that has occurred to continued success. So like the world in 2017, or I'm sorry, in 2019, we would have not known about a worldwide pandemic. And still today, cripples economies, manufacturing, and has lasting impacts. We were not immune, but tonight, I'm here to share our success of 2022. So during design and construction, we heard about the countless memories that had been made at our former facilities. This presentation will be a snapshot of memories made in one year and the continuation of growing and building community in all program cost centers. So as we break this down, I created this into the three cost centers that we work in from a budget perspective. They have been historically tracked, and prior to the pandemic, to give you kind of a idea of the numbers we're dealing with and the growth that have occurred, historically we averaged interactions with between 75,000 and 85,000 people per year at the former facilities. While it is impossible to compare the facilities of today to the past, even comparing the first two years of operation at MCC to 2022 is impossible due to the restrictions that occurred during that timeframe. And then the beginning of 2022, we had a new strain of COVID. But then midway through 2022, something changed. By second quarter, people were ready to be out and involved, and the desire has continued to grow. So as you can tell, the farmer's market had a 5% increase. Special events grew by 103%. That's because 2022 was the first time we had Turkey Creek Festival since 2019, in addition to some other fun events that really grew in 2022. As of today, our visitation at the community center surpasses what we did January through April in 2022. So we are still growing, but visitation last year grew by 78%. So let's take a look at what makes these numbers up. So we all know the Marion marketplace, but did you know how it opened in 2001 with a quarter cent sales tax? It can host 36 vendors. It is available for rent. It hosts many of our special events, while the primary function is the farmer's market, and we've all come to love its great vendors and amazing produce. In 2022, besides welcoming about 12,000 visitors, what did the operations accomplish? Well, this year, or last year, excuse me, we only operated for 21 weeks. That is because of how the Saturdays fell. We opened the first Saturday in May and closed the last Saturday in September. So with one week less operation, we did see a slight decrease in the number of vendors, but our attendance increased by 51 shoppers per week. Just for comparison, our highest year record is 2016 with 17,500 people. This was a 24-week season when we still went into the first two weeks of October. Keeping the market is beautiful, our keeping the market beautiful is important. Each year, there are improvements planned throughout the site. Some are more visible than others, but all impact the overall experience. Our special events, we're a big, we're a small city that does big things. With over 15,000 people participating in 21 events, 21 because we have 12 art openings every, art throughout the year, there seems to be something going on all the time. We'll be kicking off our 2023 season in seven short weeks, but let's look back at what 2022 was. So, as you can see, all of our events are listed here, and we, my staff does a tremendous job in implementing these. Mother nature, of course, always plays a factor. If somebody can learn how to control mother nature, we will set records at every event every year. As you can tell, we had to cancel one because of weather, but we had three that set records. Cruise night beat the previous attendance by 150 participants. Car show set a record registration with 282 cars, which then set a record, record number of participants in attendance. And Marion Drive Live, after struggling for the first several years, hit its stride last year, and we are excited to be announcing the 2023 lineup soon. In 2023, we'll be adding an additional cruise night, a Family Fun Friday, to the schedule, and those details should be in the summer highlights, which should be hitting mailboxes this week. The last and largest cost center to the department is the community center, of course, and it's going to take a little bit. There we go. The growth of the community center has been a labor of love for staff and is the most exciting news to share. Today, there are 2,412 active memberships with 4,330 members. So those memberships are 979 traditional, which means memberships and non-residents, 1,225 that participate in our insurance-based programs, 36 are our boards and commissions, and 172 employees. The numbers captured at the community center encompass all programs and visitors throughout the year. For perspective, the last year of the MAC and IBFCC, the department interacted with 55,782 patrons that year. To simplify the data, each program is classified into a broad category, and we like to show our growth. You can see everything grew from 21 to 22 significantly. You might ask, why is water fitness an 891% increase? I did the math for you real quick. That's because a facility closed in 21, and we were fortunate enough to grab that instructor, and she is going gangbusters across the board. And she is very much loved. Her water classes are at capacity almost every day. And why did MCC events jump up so much? We were lucky to have brunch with the bunny, breakfast with Santa, a pool party, and a movie night, all were able to be held for the first time in the new facility. Previous years, we'd had to do other things to make those happen, but last year, they all went off as they had. Visits were up 68%, an increase of 57,400. Rentals continue to grow. We are now the host of a quilters group, an orchid society, a local church, and a local business group, all who meet with us sometimes on a weekly basis. We love to host city functions and city-sponsored professional groups and chamber events. If the space is available, we welcome the opportunity. This is the best marketing we can do of the community center. It leads to inquiries about the community center and usually other rentals. It's wonderful how that works. Knowing the building is being used and new family memories are being made is critical to the building community, but there was a financial goal tied to this. So how do these numbers translate financially? The numbers presented have been reviewed by the finance director, this is my caveat, but they are not audited. Even with a slow start to 2022 due to the new strain of COVID, revenues were strong for the year. As anticipated, membership is the largest revenue generator, followed by programs and then rentals. Program growth has been slow. We were down a staff member a good portion of the year, but some positive things that came out of our programs was the Fit Class Pass, adult social and DIY activities, you see those on Facebook all the time, those classes are always full. Swim lessons continue to max out every single class, and the youth aquatic program and pickleball. If you haven't been there on Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays, sometimes it's hard to find a court. Staff continues to recruit instructors for fitness and research, research activities for continued program growth. As you can see, again, reviewed by the finance director but not audited, personnel accounts for 62% of the total expenses. Contract services include things like HVAC repairs, cleaning repairs, our cleaning, general equipment repairs, education and training, general supplies, as you would imagine, program supplies, cleaning, and office. Managing expenses is an ongoing challenge as inflation has impacted the cost of doing business. How did these revenues and expenses compare to the goal that we promised in 2018? Parks and Recreation was subsidized at approximately $720,000 in 2018 to provide recreation activities at MAC and IBFCC. As previously shared, there were 55,782 participants in the program. Recreation cost per visitor, or cost per smile in 2018, was approximately $12.91 per person. Four years later, the subsidy has increased $52,000, yet the cost of recreation, or the cost per smile, has significantly decreased to $3.96 per person. In 2023, staff is prepared to continue to, to monitor expenses and are finding ways to manage these costs. Revenue growth has been extremely strong in the first quarter. To date, revenues have increased 33% over 2022. The standing joke amongst staff in 20 and mid-2022, we were given, I'm going to say an Aston Martin, you put your favorite fast speedy car that you want to drive on the Autobahn out there? We were given an Aston Martin and told not to take it out of first gear. We learned how the car handled, tested its boundaries, had a few false starts. It was not our favorite time, but we learned a lot. One day last year, out of the blue, we were driving under caution, and that, somehow, that caution flag changed and the green flag dropped. We quickly found the accelerator and have no plans to look back. On crazy days, the joke now is, sit down, buckle up, and enjoy the ride. Let's see where we can go. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any, very good report? Do we have any questions for Director Slogan? Okay, well, thank you for your excellent report and, yeah, and the fine job that the community center and your staff are doing.
Thank you.
Okay, it looks like our next person will be, our chief deener is going to come up and give the fire department's annual report.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, that is a tough act to follow, so we will do our, let's see. Okay, like previous years, our annual report, which is intended Okay, like previous years, our annual report, which is intended to inform and educate, is all electronic. So what we have shared with you is obviously a highlight of 2022, where you can drill into performance measures. I've brought specifics for Miriam since the majority of our boundaries go from the northern edge up here all the way to Miami County. So as we stroll through, again, we always have the history of how we've evolved and our product to several mergers. Your residents are able to dial in on the specific areas within our maps, our stations, the station upstairs, and you can really dial into what items that you really want to talk about or learn about. Our group and our evolution between our senior staffs and personnels has had significant changes, much like in 2015 when we merged with Miriam. We have just recently completed a full year of a merger with Fire District Number Two to our south, onboarding new individuals, 21 just like with Miriam, and having everyone acclimate and serving a, a group mission. But I think, much like Miriam, I think that we can look at everyone in the eye that have changed uniforms and say that we've delivered what we've promised, and a lot of transition happened. But I think a lot of folks are settling into their position to do their job description, irregardless of where they're located throughout the, throughout our service area. When we get down to the budgets and those types of things, obviously, those are big questions that we have. You know, we spend, you know, we're a $30 million operation now, so over the years, that's a significant amount of public investment that we should be able to demonstrate and articulate that we're taking those dollars and putting them to good use to describe what the quality of life impacts are made, whether it's, what is our code save rates, what is our fire loss rates compared to our assessed valuations? Those are the kinds of things, our trauma scene times, all those types of things are things that your folks can dial into and answer any questions that you may have, as well as in trying to educate and, uh, inform and coach business owners throughout our service areas of how to manage a business and do so safely without impacting loss of business for other folks through the fires or those types of things. Again, I'm not going to go through all the specific performance measures, but I do want to get down to the, to the bottom is really where we try to consistently try to educate. You know, we've done this quite a while. It still comes down to human factors that cause fires, smoking, cooking, and use of electrical equipment. So anytime we have an opportunity to talk about some of the impacts we've made in people's lives, as well as encourage them, if you don't know CPR, give us a call, we'll teach you. If you don't have a working smoke detector where you live, give us a call, we'll give you a free one, we'll even put it up for you. So those continue to be our major public education campaigns that we ask the community to help us as much as possible, connect the dots. We have the resources, we just need to connect and have an invitation to go and, and, and solve the problem. As well as our human interest stories, our biggest, uh, projects internally, taking care, you know, we, we spend a lot of time focusing on the folks we serve. We also need to spend some time focused on the responders as well. Mental health and resiliency is something that we're really trying to take a focus on and get caught up. You know, we're better than we have been, but we're, you know, not, not where we really need to be, not only as an organization, but in, in a service itself. COVID was not the easiest thing on our responders and the grind and the stresses and all those types of things that are associated with that. So we are spending time, we're letting people know specifically on this story, not only our peer support team that's there to try to catch people, if they can help connect them to where they need to be. We did spend quite a bit of investing with all of our responders, going to Warhorses out in Southern Overland Park, that spends a lot of their time with veterans, with PTS, and all of those types of things. So we're working, trying to get better, always listening to see if there are things that we can add to make sure that we can make sure someone has a healthy career and can come out after 30, 35 years and, and, and enjoy those, those next chapters. So I encourage you to take a look at all of these interest stories and learn, you can go as deep as you're looking, if you're interested in. As far as performance measures specifically for the city of Miriam, really in the last five years, you guys have been very consistent. You run roughly 1,500 EMS calls a year. You run roughly between 30 and 45 fire-related type calls a year. Of those structures, it's roughly three to five structure fires a year, and we just had one earlier, or end of last week in one of your apartment buildings. So we do keep track of all those numbers. We run close to 600 inspections. Our prevention division is active within your community, making sure that they're inspecting all your commercial occupancies, they're checking out your schools, your restaurants, a lot of the facilities that have commerce, just to, again, to make sure that they are compliant, that they're, if there's coaching opportunities, leave them with coaching opportunities. The good news is, we didn't have to write one ticket in Miriam last year, so our folks were able to relay and coach without having to do some of the enforcement issues that we are capable of doing. Again, burn permits are popular in, in Miriam. We have issued 282 burn permits to residents, and out of that, we only had two illegal burns that were something that we had to get involved with and those types of things. So again, uh, those are the numbers that are applied to, to Miriam. It, uh, it is, it has been, it's hard to imagine, we're a year away from negotiating, renegotiating another 10 or whatever term agreement to provide service, but I'll pause there, see if there's any questions specifically on any of the stories and/or performance measures as it relates to Miriam.
Any questions for Chief Deener? Yeah, Mr. Caldol.
My annual question. The last couple of years, I've asked about diversity and inclusion, and you've assured me that it's a priority and that you're making progress. So I'm disappointed that that's not included in your annual report. And what I do see in the annual report is a lot of people that look like me. And so this year, my question's going to be a little bit different. It's, uh, will you come back at a different time, a different date, and give us a presentation on your efforts and results around diversity and inclusion?
Well, the quick answer is no, someone else will.
Okay.
I, I will be retiring at the end of this week, and so, you know, that, those were the same, yeah, so, um, the quick answer is yes, they will come and explain that. I know last time when we had pictures up, you, you know, you said that same comment and, and what, you know, that, that picture was more diverse than I really wanted to get into at, at a public meeting. So part of our production, or part of our diversity numbers also have impacts on our, on our mergers. When we merged with the city of, of Miriam, your diversity numbers looked different than Overland Park's diversity numbers, as Southern Johnson County looks different than all those. So the 42 people that we have merged with, we inherited your diversity numbers that now became part of ours. The good news is, we're as diverse now as we've ever been. The only diversity issue that we're really dealing, struggling with is females. The number of folks entering into the fire service is, since the 29 years I've been in, has been the lowest amount of folks applying to get into the fire service than we've had. So much like our police department that talks about their 2030 program, where they want to get to 30% of females on the police force, that is something right now that we, there's an enormous gap for us to get there. It just, we're, there's nothing in our recruitment area. So when we look at diversity issues and recruiting, our, our new partnership with Blue Valley School District, so the kids that come in and sit in that class is our future diversity. The kids that go to Johnson County Community College, that is our first, uh, that is our diversity. So we will have a report that will show that our, our recruitment efforts are, are representative of the community we serve. One population of our community that we're well under is our Asian community. We've met with the leadership of the Asian communities and stuff like that, but, you know, a long-winded answer to your question is, you know, we do take that seriously. We are representative of the folks that we're recruiting. You know, we're always looking to help to see if there's any stigma or barriers or reasons why we're not getting to that. But again, the folks that we're hiring most, more than likely are in our, in your backyard. That has always been our, our, our biggest opportunity to recruit folks and those types of things. So there'll be a, I'm sure there will be a presentation in the near future to answer those questions.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Chief Deener? Okay, well, I, I see no other questions. We thank you for 36 years in the fire service and serving the communities and not only obviously Overland Park, but in Miriam and Platt and all the other places that you've been, you've served, and we look forward to seeing you at your retirement on, on Friday.
Thanks, appreciate it. It's been an honor.
Thanks. Okay. Well, I think I am finally through with my mayor's report. There was a few others in there too. Council items, the first item up on council items is consider approval of the goals and objectives of the 2024 operating budget. It's like we have our finance director coming in.
As I'm sure you recall, at the last city council meeting, we had a workshop and discussed these goals and objectives at length. Staff went back and tried to capture what the city council was wanting from in their goals and objectives, and so we have submitted for your approval the 2024 goals and objectives and request that you approve those or let us know where we failed, so.
Okay, I, does anyone have any questions currently for Director Oliver before, and then I, I see Mr. Cronin wants to address this issue as well too, but I'll entertain questions for Director Oliver from the council at this point.
Okay.
Okay, I, I see.
Thank you.
Mr. Cronin, if this is your item, please come forward, sir. Name and address for the record again.
Billy Cronin, 6633 Wed Street. The budget objectives before you tonight were discussed earlier this month off camera after the last council meeting. Not everything that was discussed two weeks ago appears in the agenda tonight, and I'm thankful for that. I would not support, for instance, using neighbors' tax money to create a Wi-Fi network along the public streets in Miriam. Throughout all government, budget objectives routinely get used to expand the scope and power and presence in all our lives of government, and perhaps most importantly, to expand the cost of that government. Year after year, Miriam has increased its budget and hid behind an unchanging mill rate to placate the public. I encourage each of you to share the objectives that you supported today for the record. This year, I'm thankful about one budget objective especially. For the first time I can recall, lowering the, lowering the mill rate appears in plain text as an objective on our budget. Being able to lower the mill rate as an objective, that's really awesome. Now, I would prefer that it wasn't couched literally on both sides by conditional weasel words that can back out of that commitment on both sides, or sort of conditional if possibles, things like that. That language castes doubt on our city's sincerity to that objective. But I want to thank Council McNeil and Caldol for supporting fiscally responsible budget control earlier this month, and I hope to see that objective approved and observed for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cronin. Okay, at this point, I'd, I would entertain a motion to approve the Council on God, Richard.
Mr. Mayor, I approve that the council approve, I move that the council approve goals and objectives for the 2024 budget.
Do I have a motion? Do I hear a second? Ms. Sheveta.
I'll second that.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we have a motion, a second.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldol.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Sheveta.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Looks like the next item up on council agenda is consider approval of an ordinance renewing the franchise agreement with the Sprint Communications Company, LP. Who's going to be addressing that? Mr. Engel.
I, I can address that.
Thank you.
The next two items are very similar. They are both franchise ordinances. The basics of these ordinances are kind of the same as all of our other franchise ordinances. The company is required to submit a 5% gross receipts tax to the city for the franchise fee. The initial terms of both of these agreements are for two years, and they each have eight two-year automatic renewals, and those can be canceled by any party with proper notice. For the first one, which is the Sprint, we are recommending to waive the first reading as their original 2005 ordinance will expire on April 1st. With the second one, the Zayo Group, there is no urgency on that one. We have adequate time to do two readings. This council could always waive that reading as well. And city attorney has drafted both of these ordinances. They're probably both exactly the same, just have different names inserted in them. I can answer any questions, or our city attorney is here as he's worked with attorneys from both companies to work out this agreement.
Okay, we have any questions for our city clerk or city attorney? Okay, I, I see no questions at this point. I would entertain a motion to waive the customary first reading. Ms. Yodrich.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council waive the customary first reading of an ordinance renewing a franchise agreement with Sprint.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I hear a second? Okay, go ahead, Ms. Ryder.
Mr. Mayor, I second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we have a motion, a second. Go ahead.
Councilmember Caldol.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Sheveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Okay, and now that we've waived our first reading, I would entertain a motion to approve that. Ms. Yodrich.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve an ordinance renewing a franchise agreement with Sprint.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I hear a second? Is it over here? Ms. Caldol.
I was like a dad.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
I, and I also want to note, for those who need it, we have a franchise fee grant that's available for everybody to look into. It's on the Miriam website.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sheveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldol.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Okay, I would give a, yes.
I, I want, I want to say that I think we should go ahead and waive the first reading of this, of the second agreement as well.
Okay, so I was going to ask, okay, we have a motion to waive the first reading. Yes, and you make that as a motion of the.
I think.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll second that.
Okay, and Ms. Yodrich, seconds that. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Sheveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldol.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
And motion passes seven zero. Apparently, I can't count tonight.
Yeah, thank you for catching that.
Got it all night.
You were consistent, you were consistent. Okay, so having Ms. Yodrich, I'll let you entertain a motion to approve that.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve an ordinance renewing the franchise agreement with Zayo Group LLC.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I hear a second? Okay, Mr. Silvers, go ahead.
I'll second that.
Yeah, we have a motion, a second, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Sheveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldol.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Looks like our next item will be staff and informational items. We have Director Oliver coming forward for our February report.
The February financial report was included in the packet this time. Probably the biggest thing to note for February was, if you look at those sales tax numbers, they include what we received in January and February, which was really November and December sales, so you can kind of see how we did from a sale perspective for the year. Those numbers are still preliminary. Next week, the auditors will come in and put finance kind of through the meat grinder and spit us back out, and we'll have a completed audit report sometime in May. So if there's any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Do we have any questions for Director Oliver?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, all right. Uh, next item looks like will be the, well, I guess our capital, well, because I missed my sheet here, but community development update.
Yeah, the update, I know, I was like, it's on the other page here, I flipped it over. Okay, Director Dyer, please give us our update.
Sure, sure. Uh, meeting council, Mayor Brian Dyer, community development director, um, after, this evening, actually, just concentrating, a couple of construction projects are going on out there. Obviously, we have the cancer center, as well as, if you haven't noticed, the movie theater is doing a significant remodel, but the two things I want to point out is, first of all, the library. But the two things I want to point out is, first of all, the library, uh, new building. If you haven't been over there, been by there, they did a massive, uh, concrete pour a couple of weeks ago. They set a lot of the forms up, they're going to start stripping those forms off here in the next few days, but they said it went very well. Um, so it's, uh, it was just really neat to see them do it, and it's just impressive the amount of, uh, forms and stuff it takes to, to put that all together, so. This is staffers being, had an opportunity to watch it from, uh, the break room and also from the top of the parking garage. So it's been really, really, uh, interesting and neat to follow, and, uh, we're excited to see it, um, underway. The next big project is obviously Mariam Grand Station. Uh, that project continues to go along well. We are in the, uh, second review of the building permit for the apartment buildings, as well as the parking garage, the parking structures going on over there. If you haven't been by there, go along on the backside of it, you can start to get a pretty good idea of where, um, the grades are going to be and things like that. As you can see, they've also, they've set, uh, a lot of the storm boxes out there, and that's always where you can kind of tell where the grades are going to be, is where the storm boxes are at. So if you have any chance to drive back there, um, it, it is really, uh, it gives you really good vision and a really good idea of where, um, you can see where the main three, the three buildings are going to be at, the two apartment buildings with the parking structure in the middle, you can get a pretty good idea. They're getting close to, I think, to having those pads at grade for where they want to start doing the foundations. So, uh, it gives you a really good idea how it's going to, um, look, uh, spatially. And then also, they've also done a lot of the, uh, what, surprisingly, not a lot of retaining wall, but the retaining wall that is going to be over there, they've done, uh, quite a bit of work on that. So again, um, get a chance, go by there, take a look. Uh, we're still working with the underground utilities along Shaw Mission Parkway. We continue to work with Evergy, um, can, continue to work with Atalant, the, uh, third-party, uh, engineering firm for Evergy, as well as Drake on that. That goes along, that's going along well. Um, just so that you know, that they, they being Atalant and Evergy are going to put together, um, contracts for the city to consider for the project. We, uh, they, we have told them, and they understand that we will, uh, when we have all those contracts as one price to give you all to review and consider, we will bring that forward to you, so they are working on getting that information for you. So, um, we're hoping in the upcoming months, we'll have that for you to consider. But again, that's going along, uh, going along very well also. Um, a little bit about the grants, um, exterior grant, residential exterior grant is going, uh, we've had, uh, I believe, yes, almost 40 applicants on that. We have about $35,000 that's unallocated. So if anybody, uh, has a project they're wanting to do, we still have funds available, and we encourage them to, um, make a application to us to, to get that, uh, to help them out with that. And our sustainable, uh, grant is also, um, we're, uh, got about 10 applicants around it. How about $45,000 left in that? So folks are, a project that they want to do, like windows, new HVAC system, encourage them to come in and make a, a, application for that. I will say that our past experience with that program is when the warm weather strikes and people turn on their AC and it doesn't work, that's when a lot of people will line up and take advantage of that program again. So, um, I would encourage folks not to wait if, when they see, we have a pretty good balance in there, it could quickly go away on the, um, after the first couple of hot weeks. So also, uh, we have put out the, um, bid packet for the, um, residential driveway program. So that is out there, we're going to be getting those bids back, uh, first of next month, and we'll be opening those up. Uh, had a lot of interest in that, and seems to be perhaps a little bit of, I don't want to say softening of the market out there for concrete work, but it definitely doesn't seem to be nearly as, for our projects, as competitive as it was, uh, this time last year. Um, we had much more interest in that than what we had, uh, last year at this point in time. So we're hoping we get good bids back for that and, and have, um, uh, be able to do all the driveways we have, uh, out there. And then the final thing, um, I want to mention is, again, a property tax rebate program. Uh, that's a program that rebates the city's portion of property tax for homeowners who, uh, meet our income guidelines. Uh, that continues to be open, we're still taking applications for that. So if anybody, uh, knows anybody out there or anybody's interested in that program, please, uh, get ahold of, of us, David Easley, our Neighborhood Services Manager, and we can get you signed up for that. So, that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Any questions for Director Dyer? Okay, I see no questions, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, uh, next item is an informational item, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Uh, this, I don't know if anybody's had a chance to review that, so maybe any questions for Director Slocum concerning that? I s- I see no questions for you, and, okay, thank you for that report. I'll kind, uh, call on Stringel to see if there's anything else from a staff perspective.
Sure, I only have one item there that's, uh, the State of the County Address and Luncheon is, uh, Tuesday, April 4th. That is, uh, new incoming or newly sworn in Chairman Kelly with the Johnson County Commissioners gives his annual address, and that, uh, luncheon will be between 11:30 and 1:00 at the OB, OP Convention Center. We've got a couple of slots open, uh, several folks have RSVP'd, but we do have a couple of slots open, so please reach out to Jennifer if you, uh, have some availability, that's a good, um, event. Lots of folks, well-attended, it's at the OP Convention Center for a reason, but that's a, that's a great event, we have a table. So please reach out to Jennifer if you, uh, have not already and you're able to attend. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Ringel? Yeah, I can say I see no questions. Uh, I understand we have an executive session that's coming up. Oh, so excuse me, sorry.
He told me 30 minutes, I'm willing to try to read it.
Okay, all right, go ahead, Ms., Ms. Hands.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I move that the governing body recess into executive session pursuant to KSA 754319B6, which allows the governing body to recess into executive session for preliminary discussions related to acquisition of real property. Present will be the governing body, city attorney, city administrator, and community development director. The meeting will reconvene in the council chambers at 8:30.
8:30, can we have a motion, who I hear a second? Okay, go ahead, Ms. Ryder.
I second.
Can we have a motion, a second, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
We'll be meeting upstairs, Ms. Ringel, or, yes, upstairs, okay. Uh, well, we take about five minutes, and then we'll reconvene upstairs in the, uh, community training room.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor, I move, will you adjourn?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.